Okay, you're on.
This is Friday, October 5th. Border selection, selection work session continuation. It was preceded by a non-public session. We're back in public session now. And prior business we have to work on today is the Highway Department budget for 2019. Thanks for being here, Jim.
No problem, sir. I was a little late. So I did the changes, I believe I did the changes that you were looking for as far as adding swin, the possum swin and the Japanese knotweed spring and the beaver control. And also the roadside mown. I did add that to alter this list.
Want me to make some copies?
You don't have a copy of this?
No, no, it should be on the back. The last page, no?
Is that this here?
Yeah.
And then I can put the notes in the budget.
So Karen, these numbers were collected in the budget here? So, for instance, general expenses, two thousand.
Yep, and then just some, these are notes here, eight hundred and one thousand, so eighteen hundred, what about two thousand, did you say it was?
Yeah.
Oh, rather thirty-eight hundred, yeah, are those two things, yeah. And then the rest are other dismissal.
So what else was in the general expenses? Oh, I see.
That was just like a regular budget line, just for probably a catch-all.
Yep. Not weed control. It's actually fall, Japanese knotweed, that's when your sprays on the fall.
End of, end of August, beginning of September, yep. Taking very little bit.
You know, what you get is, you have to start the process of the spring to get the product.
Yes, after we sold the issue with getting permits, it was the state that actually was behind on that.
Yep. As I remember from, it's the Department of Agriculture that does the permits for herbicide.
Correct.
Right, as he does for the aquatic.
Just one, one guy.
Right. And ninety days is what they require to do it, so, I mean, that's the standard timeframe, so that's why we just need to get the application in. There's no reason it has to wait until after.
Well, I think we should, yeah, we could start today.
Go in early, get the process started, and then...
Spend a great time here.
And then that's available when you do, need to do it. Okay, so, questions?
So we're looking at a ten percent increase in the honorary budget. I guess I'd be able to help with that. We're up thirty-two thousand six hundred in the winter maintenance budget. Four thousand in the summer maintenance, three thousand in spring, and two thousand in fall. So, an increase of forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah, the last few winters have been pretty rough, and we seem to come up short every year as far as that.
Who uses ten?
Sets us behind on everything else, and we have to make up the difference using the summer maintenance or the fall maintenance to make up the difference.
Now, earlier in the year when we were looking at rate of travel on expenditure and the fact that we spent a lot, overspent the clinic budget in the first part of the winter of this year, we agreed at that time we were gonna set aside money out of the remaining budget to cover winter maintenance coming into this calendar year. I don't remember, how much, how much did we set aside?
Well, we, we knew that we were gonna need about fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
Can you run the ballpark? So can you come up with fifty-eight?
Yeah, so I thought you said fifty-eight.
And you're gonna be able to meet that goal, right?
That's what we're doing our best to achieve.
We're gonna be able to meet that goal, right? So we, first of all, we have some big bills to pay, don't we?
Yes.
And what are they?
We have the truck, the new town truck that we bought, that's gonna be coming back. We were hoping for today, but we haven't heard back on it yet, so they, they said they thought it might be finished as early as today.
And they gave you an estimate, right?
They gave us an estimate, but they did not give us an estimate as far as the welding. It's just by the hour. So we have an estimate as far as the sand, what's in the painting, but not the welding. The welding is by the hour. So...
Do we have any idea how many hours they took?
We don't at this point.
Well, I'll just start going down through them. On winter maintenance, do you have it broken down to part one, part two? Winter part one, winter part two?
I do not, as far as like the end of the year kind of thing, like from January...
First till spring.
I don't have it broken down that way, but I mean, I think, it sounds like you do, if you have a number of fifty-eight thousand.
It's about sixty, forty in the last ten years, correct?
It's, um...
So I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Why don't we put winter maintenance part one and winter maintenance part two, so we can understand the difference? Then I can ask the question, how much sand do we use, how much salt do we use, et cetera.
So you're suggesting splitting winter maintenance into two separate lines?
At least subcategories. I look at all the other budgets he breaks down, they list the officers or crews or whatever.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, so...
So the salt and sand are in the winter maintenance budget?
Yes.
And you have those figures?
Those vary every year, but I can tell you...
Well, in the last five years, you know what they are?
I know what it costs to fill the shed. The salt runs about sixty dollars a yard, and it can hold approximately ninety yards at a time, like it's filled. We go through approximately... We fill that shed, you know, four times a year.
I know in some years you've been able to get the winter salt, you know, the last weekend December when you had some money, so there's some gains mentioned there, which is good business, but I'd like to have those figures, if it's possible.
Well, they do vary though, and it's not a constant, so...
Well, thirteen thousand dollars, the numbers you just gave us. It's two hundred and sixteen yards.
And the sand?
Uh, we go through, uh, last year I think we went through approximately four thousand yards.
And does the sand go out to bed?
Uh, it doesn't. We get most of it from the Evans Brothers, because they're cheapest.
I've heard good things about them.
The other, mostly the other towns are using it as well.
And how much a yard?
Uh, I believe it's seven dollars a yard.
I think that's pretty good. But there's also trucking costs, right?
Correct, which we use the town truck, our new town truck last year, to save us some money.
From a program point, if you, sand doesn't cost just seven dollars a...
Oh, no, not if, yeah, you're figuring the trucking out, correct.
Okay. I'd like to see those things broken down. Oh, can I go to another one? Highway equipment maintenance, what are you maintaining this year for equipment?
Um, well, on the new town truck, we don't have a spare tire for that, so we should have a spare front tire and a spare rear tire. They're both different, they don't even change. Uh, so, that's twenty-eight hundred dollars, just two tires for the town truck. And then...
Tire and wheel?
Yes, tire and wheel, yep, correct.
And of course putting them on and balancing them, and any repairs, I understand.
Yeah, and then we have the normal, you know, as far as the oil changes and the air filter change, all that stuff, that's required every year. And also on the town wood chipper, the radiator is leaking beyond repair, we're gonna have to do a new radiator on that, which we got.
I had that, the next thing to ask, are we using the wood chipper at all? I haven't seen it used.
We haven't been, the, the leak has gotten to the point where we need the new radiator.
And how old is that unit? Does it make sense getting rid of it?
It's about a ninety-four, I think, nineteen ninety-four.
That's a highly vibrating...
It seems to run well. We did do the motor on it when I first started, so the motor seems to run very well.
And how much money in your budget to repair that?
It was two thousand dollars for that.
Okay, and then there's labor and stuff like that, so it jacks it up a little bit more?
Correct.
So what did you put in the budget for wood chipper?
Well, I had twenty-six hundred for, you know, in the budget for that, but it was two thousand.
Okay. What about, how many sanders does the town own?
Town owns, including the ones that are in the bed, the in-bed trucks, sanders. We have those two, plus two small sanders that go in the back of...
And how old are those?
They're old. The newest one is ten years old.
Do you have an estimate what it's gonna cost for each one of those to be put, to get it through the winter?
We usually spend about, well, we have to usually, changing the sand, the chains that go in it, that's a one-tier project, that's on pretty much every sander, whether it's new or used. And it's about a thousand dollars a piece per sander.
Does that include labor and parts and stuff like that?
Yep.
So that's four thousand there, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other equipment that we need to take care of?
Well, we have the town, the old town truck that we did, we did get a list back from, from the town with fire apparatus place. And we basically told us what we knew. It's old and rusty, and it's gonna require a fair amount of work. We can probably get it through to next year if we did the work ourselves, and put about five thousand into it. That's to get us through this year.
Through the season.
Correct. But we do know there's more, more issues down the road that comes along with that old truck.
Right.
Also, we have a file cutting edges, that we change every, well, a couple times a year.
Do you have that, boss?
I do have this, yes.
Can I make copies for my swatmen, so they can be educated? I'll go make them.
I, I might have enough, I can have enough.
Mine is right here.
There you have them already.
When did this come out?
When did we get the list, right?
Yeah, when did this list come out?
Uh, they sent it to me, I believe.
What was it?
I haven't remembered.
It was a week, week and a half ago.
September thirteenth, it says.
So when I, that's when I...
That's when we dropped it off.
That's when I got mine, September thirteenth. What's the date today?
October. So how did you get a copy on September thirteenth?
I went up and got a copy.
Oh, you went up to Lexington Fire Service?
Also got the number of miles and engine hours on the engine.
So do we get a price on this?
Well, you know, I guess if you wanted to have it brand-new, you would have to replace everything, but I think some of this stuff isn't a hundred percent correct. We're the, we're talking about on the back of the truck, we have the, let's see if we can find it, that one. On the brake actuators, we replaced more than half of them last year. I can't assume that they're already beyond repair or unusability, you know, they would all, you know, we replaced them last year. So there's things like that. You know, I, I know the thing's tired, we're not, I'm not gonna dispute that, the thing's very tired, but I would like to try to, if we could, get through one more season with it. You know, the springs, we had one broken leaf spring.
So the whole, all the leaves are broken?
No, it has one broken leaf, one leaf, that's right. Correct. No, I'm kinda used to having to fix things.
Excuse me, Chip, you're a truck driver, and your family was in it for three decades. You know when you undo a, a leaf spring on a truck this age, it's amazing how many more are cracked that you can't see from inspection.
Well, they, they very well might be, but I mean, if it's, needs new springs, all new hardware, pretty expensive proposition. It's got a thirty-eight thousand pound suspension, or what, forty?
The, how many pounds, you mean?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think the GBW is thirty, thirty-four thousand. But, you know, we, we have in the past replaced single leaves on it before, and those happen, you know, occasionally. So I, I think if we could just try to get it back together so it was safe and usable, and try to get one more yard of it, it would be very helpful for us. I do know it needs to be replaced, there's no question about that, not disputing that in any way.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
You may.
I'm just gonna put this into the record. A, rear springs have failed. Front springs are near failure. Front brakes are worn out, and it goes through and lists all the things that need to be done. Rear brake actuators are heavily corroded and should be replaced. Front shock absorbers are rotted and leaking. Talks about the light system not working. All air brake valves in the frame are rotted.
We replaced half of them last year, though.
When you take one out, you know, you have to do all the fittings. Radiator leaks, we know that. Parking brake doesn't work. Horn is inoperable, inoperable, so it doesn't pass inspection. All steel hydraulic tubes are rotted, failure is imminent. Let's go on to engine oil leaks. Two numbers to list recommend cleaning the engine and test run just to locate the leaks. May be necessary to remove engine to complete repair, especially if you remove the two gaskets that need to be removed. Engine won't start, fuel bleeds back when shut off. May need new injectors. No sign of chassis grease. I suspect the U-joint spring shackles will be seized and need to be repaired or replaced. Dump body, we already know is in need of a substantial repair. Frame and cross members are heavily rustled. The good news is that the upper and lower frame flanges are straight and show no signs of cracks at this time. I went online, Mr. Chairman, and just using the names of the things that they listed here, I came up with over twenty-four thousand dollars in parts. And then I went over and said if we, to repair this stuff at ninety dollars an hour, what would it be? And it was ninety thousand dollars a week. Second point, I kept track in the month of January, February, and to March 12th of last, just to get through the winter. One hundred and twelve and a half hours of time by our road staff. It's over six thousand dollars in parts. Sir, that's a hundred hours that they're not out getting our roads sanded and salted. All right, I'm prepared to make a statement, but I'll hold until other people speak.
Go ahead.
I will not be voting for any repairs to this truck. I can in good conscience. The taxpayers' money, it has served the town well. This guy here with the two trucks were able to get roads open four hours earlier than ever before. But spending a hundred hours in just part of a winter takes his guys, who are already tired, away from what we hire them for. Thank you.
And that's option B.
Contract, which is what you should have at hand anyway, because the trucks don't fail, or some other trucks gonna fail, so find some contractors that wanna work. That's the only option you have.
That's what we do, we, we take up the slack with my trucks, but...
Well, no, you gotta put it out on the street, we're not gonna...
Put it out to bid?
What's that?
Put it out to bid?
Yeah.
Other towns don't. The only other thing was, and it wouldn't have helped out this year, is the diesel grant started October 1st, it closes October 15th. I won't be writing that grant, because my other jobs have started.
Yeah, we don't have any options, I don't see it.
If there's something else, folks, please educate me. I, I go, I understand what this guy goes through, I'm like you. I drove a truck years ago, I was a wingman years ago.
Well, I'm not gonna sit here and have a, have a lawyer come back here February 15th to tell us that something shit the bed and we're gonna have to do something else. We need to do something else now.
I second, I second.
I'm not agreeing with it, there's no sense in spending another dollar on that old truck.
Right.
Because you're never gonna get it out of it.
Or what are we gonna do with it then?
Oh, you know, give it to the first person who was here today.
No, yeah.
I mean, you've worked it to the point where it has very little value. So if you put sixty thousand dollars or forty thousand, or twenty thousand dollars into it, you're not gonna get twenty grand out of it. But even if you did get the twenty grand out of it, where are you? You're back to zero.
No, mine was proposing to put five thousand to try to get through the season, was what I was proposing, but...
I, I spoke to mechanics, and in their humble opinion...
Well, then we should sell it and put the money back into the fund.
Well, it doesn't work that way, you get the money to the town, but... Yeah, ultimately it has to go somewhere other than here. But the bigger issue, I think, is getting the roads done.
Yep.
And, so we need to put that on, on the street. It's early enough, it's October, it's gotta be somebody out there that's looking to work. And you have to do that anyway, even if your intention is to do it yourself, because that's the, that's how you price things. So we need to get some bids in here so we can properly price it, because when you do that, you're subcontracting to the town. I'm sure you're paying yourself, I hope you are. I said, we want you to do it for nothing.
So we're gonna bid out the snowplow for the season?
Well, part of it. You know, you've got one truck that's...
But they have six-wheeler, don't they, else?
You got one truck that does it. And we're not gonna do the whole snowplowing.
In, in the past winters, you've used a ten-wheeler, a six-wheeler, and some other trucks to plow, right? So if you don't have a six-wheeler available this year, how do we cover that gap?
Right, that's, that's filling that gap, it's not, I mean, don't, don't go all...
Not replacing the workers by the ten-wheel truck.
Well, I have more trucks, it's just that, that big six-wheeler with the embed seam in the wing saves us a lot of time.
Sure.
Yes, it does. So, and you've proved that.
Yeah. So...
And to stay in the budget, we need to have something like this.
How, how do we contract with somebody on the outside that has a truck like that, a six-wheeler, a wing?
What we can do is put an advertisement in the newspaper at this point, and we have a response, but...
We may get a six-wheeler, we may not get a six-wheeler, but the, the issue at hand is, do you spend money on a truck that's going downhill fast, which I don't think is a good idea? But you still gotta plow roads. And, you know, it's, if you do the half-time or three-quarter time pickups...
It'll take three times longer.
It's gonna explode.
Yes, right.
Yeah, yeah.
I know you have some larger, uh, do you have something that would fill that specific?
I had when I sold it, because I couldn't break even with it. So I got rid of that.
So, last one was a particularly bad winter, how many storm events were there?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but...
I heard fourteen, you heard of it, fourteen?
No, you had over forty instances where there was ice storm.
Yeah, we were out constantly. And freezing rain doesn't count as a storm in a lot of people's eyes, I guess.
It doesn't count as a storm event in Concord, but it does in Tufton, Brooklyn.
Was that forty? I'm not good with that.
The average winter is twenty-two.
And how many miles of road are we doing?
About forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Times two.
Oh, that's true, if you put that...
It's lane miles.
Lane miles, correct.
And you drive another fifty-five just to get to them.
You can't, you can't double what you've already doubled. You've said there's forty events. I'm just trying to figure out how much an event costs. I don't care if it goes up five times, it's how much does the event incur?
It, it varies as to what part of town it's in. He has storms that he has spent about six and seven thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
And when it comes to plowing, you think your lane miles?
Correct. Plus we do the parking lots as well.
Yes. The nice thing about some of the parking lots, like, you can swing through every other time, and then help the guy clean up.
Okay, so, and do you know how much, right now, if that's, if that's the case, you have forty events? It's costing you, or getting charged, a hundred and twelve dollars a mile, a hundred and twelve and a half dollars a mile, per event.
That also doesn't include parking lots then? How do you include the parking lots into that? We plowed the school, the townhouse, the town office.
Every time it snows or something happens, you do all of what you have to do.
Yeah, but you were doing by the miles, so we can...
Okay, well, I can add ten miles to that. It doesn't really, it's not gonna change everything. What I'm trying to give you is a number, so that if you know that your six-wheeler covered ten miles of road, or all the parking lots, or whatever it did, this is how much you charge the town, or that department charges the town. That's really what you got to spend. So when somebody bids on this, a six-wheeler, or whatever it is you get to bid on it, you know what you, you know what your costs are. Okay, I, we're allowing you, let's, let's leave it at a hundred and twelve, just for discussion's sake. We're allowing you a hundred and twelve dollars a mile, per event. So if you know that the six-wheeler's doing ten miles of road, just to make my math easy, that means every event that truck could generate four subcontractors. that means every event that truck could generate for a subcontractor, tractor, eleven hundred and twenty dollars. Okay? Yeah. Eleven hundred and twenty bucks. So does that work? I mean, for somebody to bid on that? I would, I would certainly think it would. I mean, you're making, for however many times you gotta plow and sand it, do all the rest of the shit you gotta do.
Yeah, but somehow that math doesn't work with me, because I had a truck and it didn't come out when we were doing the...
It's because you don't provide your time and your effort properly, but you really gotta do the exercise. This is what you're making, for one hundred and twelve dollars a mile, is what this budget is reflecting right here. That includes the sand and the salt, but that's...
Yeah, so you gotta subtract that off from there too, correct? So that...
Yeah, you can if you really wanna confuse yourself, but... Okay, if you're subcontracting, you'll subtract that the same result. But if you're doing it in-house, which you say you have been doing, or were, were doing, you, you wouldn't subtract it, it's all part of the, that's my cost to keep that mile of road open for that storm event, it's a hundred bucks. I mean, yeah, make it easy for you, it's a hundred dollars to keep that mile of road open. So I'm gonna give you ten miles of Tufton Borough, and stay open all winter. You're gonna get four thousand dollars a storm. If you have forty events, you're gonna get sixteen thousand dollars to do it. I mean, it's...
It's not easy, because it's tough work, but what you're saying is, from a budget...
Well, how long does it take to do ten miles? I don't know.
Well, you don't do them once, obviously, you're out there the whole, you're out there for, I don't know, I'm gonna say on average, is, is, an average storm is probably ten hours.
So it's a hundred dollars an hour on the day support, a hundred and ten dollars an hour?
That sounds about like you're probably gonna come up with a fair price probably from somebody.
Yeah.
And do they do the sand and salt at the same time?
Well, we're, we're gonna supply the sand and salt.
No, but they load the truck when they go out.
Yeah, they use our loader to, to load it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they pay their driver forty bucks an hour, or sixty bucks to, to the truck? No, I, I mean, I don't, if, if your budget was completely screwed up, that wouldn't have worked. You know, the hundred dollars an hour wouldn't have worked. I mean, it, that's what a dump truck should make.
Yeah, well, I think when I had mine, I was only charging seventy, but...
And it wasn't working for you, something else was wrong.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, that's why I had to get rid of it. It cost me money to have it.
Well, if you're only charging seventy, it would.
Yeah, and the problem that I found too was that, when you buy a truck that specific for doing that type of work, it sits most of the summer.
It's called a road grader.
Yeah.
Well, that's why, you know, another good reason to contract. You know, why own capital equipment if you're only gonna use it for five months out of the year? It doesn't make good economic sense. I mean, it's a town, and you need it to use it eleven or twelve months out of the year, that makes sense to account for it, otherwise you're right.
Okay, we'll work on that. I wanna go on down through. Catch basins? Who's the company that you hired, or do we put it out to bid?
Northeast Pipe, or Eastern Pipe, sorry, Eastern Pipe.
And they did an inventory of the catch basins?
They, we bring them to the catch basins, and they paint them out.
Okay, where is that inventory? I've never seen that.
We have, I don't know, I have it at the office, and they, at the town.
Could you please make the selectmen a copy available? And how many catch basins do you do?
Yeah, it's like seventy, something, seventy-six, seventy-seven.
And we can get a bid this year and sign a contract with them, so we're not waiting for them to show up at their family?
No, they've been good, they've been very good. They, they come within usually, within a week or two of the time they call them.
Now...
And they came in spot on, too, as far as what they told us it was gonna be last year.
And what do they do with the material that they take out?
They, they take it away.
They dispose of it?
Yep.
Completely, right? When it comes to catch basins, what about the catch basins at the dump and at Tufton Borough Corner that are failing? Would they catch those and give you inventory on that?
We, they clean them out, I have a guy with them, and we take notes of what we see, so...
Okay, there, there are traffic cones, and those two catch basins are, have failed before the winter?
We, we are aware, and I did talk to, I talked with Tim Aldrich in the InterDOT, and we have a plan to work together on a catch basin on the corner of Derby and Seventy-Ninth.
Is that ours, or his, or what?
It's his, but because we paved it, and he feels a little uneasy about digging up the new pavement, I said we'd work with him on that, and he appreciated that, and it'd be...
And the swell will be corrected, the, the paving?
Some reason when they put the top coat on, they kinda messed that up for us, unfortunately.
And the one at the transfer station that's sinking?
Um, there's a sinkhole, yeah, that's ours, there is a sinkhole, we're gonna cut that open and try to do an ounce of what's...
Is there money this year, or do we need to specifically budget for next year?
No, we're, we're gonna take care of it this year, we, we can't let it go, it's not...
Because my, it's my understanding, that none of the metal catch basins that you did was, goes for about twelve hundred dollars, and it costs another thousand dollars to install, is that a ballpark figure?
It's a ballpark figure, but it's, I don't think that's the, the problem with that particular one. I think that it just has a, a leak somewhere that we need to figure out. I don't think the structure itself has failed, I think that it's just some underminding. Yeah, I, you're correct.
And you'll, and in fairness, you'll only know when you get there?
Correct, we gotta, we gotta cut the pavement around it, and we're gonna explore down and see where it went. It could be just a sinkhole, it could be a number of things.
And what about the catch basins that aren't technically on town property, but empty end of town property? For example, the parking lots at the church, Melvin Church. Where do those two catch basins go? And they empty out on Lake Street, right?
Oh, correct, yes.
And do we work with those landowners, or are we legally responsible, or what?
Uh, all's I know is we clean them, when we go by, we just clean them. They don't seem to be, except for when that...
So the catch basin in the sump gets cleaned?
Correct.
In their parking lot?
Not at their parking lot, on our, on our end. Because they go down to another catch basin that we own.
I'm just, I don't know if it's possible, but doesn't it make sense for a company that's doing catch basins while it's right there, work and deal with the landowner, or is that just too complicated in your opinion?
Um, I, I don't see why it would be too complicated, you know?
And four thousand dollars is enough, even though we've been going over?
It's, it's not everything going over, it's just that, uh, my number got cut from what I asked for last year. If you look at what I, my, the department asked for, I asked for thirty-eight hundred, but I only got thirty-five hundred, and we came up with thirty-eight hundred, so...
Thank you.
Well, I got four thousand sixty-five on my budget here.
Expended this year, yeah, a little over four thousand.
Yeah. I'm not sure why that is, I thought it was only thirty-one hundred.
So something else got charged into that line, then?
I think so.
Okay, I beat that. Roadside mowing. It's been a few years, and the companies have shown a total lack of support for you. What's your strategy this year?
Uh, I have talked to a few people to put it out to bid, and, uh, I talked to a couple guys, they may be interested. One of the most for the town of Moulton Borough, and knows where town of Santa Barbara.
Can we put that out to bid and lock them up for next year? Is that the way to do it?
That's what we're trying to do, correct.
And, uh, and when you, when you hire them, it's their piece of equipment, right?
Yes.
It's their repair bill, right?
Yes.
It's their insurance bill. Who's operator?
It's the guy that owns the tractor.
Their operator, who does our road signs?
I never asked him that, I'm assuming he would put his own signs out.
And is, are there other expenses?
Nope, it's just by the hour, he does it by the hour.
Okay, and it's my understanding that there's almost a hundred lane miles to be done in town, correct?
Yes.
For example, the parking lot, that needs to be done? Any other areas that you can think of that need to be done?
I think everywhere needs to be done at this point, it's been too long, really. Every road in town needs some work.
Okay. Now, is there someone who's gonna go on, or is it another year, to trim the brush back to the stone walls? What's the foil mower that they have?
The foil mower's gonna get most of it. Uh, my intention is that possibly, um, if we don't have a bad winter this year, which you never know, I would like to go out and trim the branches and trees back that have grown in. We've done it before in the past, but it's been a long time, and we need to do that. And we've done it when the winters aren't terribly, you know, bad, as far as weather issues is taking care of roads. It gives us a little bit extra work in the meantime, and takes care of all the sightlines worse.
And do you have a ballpark figure for roadside mowing, or is it...
Well, if you have a hundred miles of lane, if you will, you got a hundred and ninety-five dollars a mile. Somebody ought to be able to do a mile of road mowing for a hundred and ninety-five dollars, I would think.
Yeah, maybe, it's gonna be close, I bet, but depends how rough it is, how, how overgrown it is. Some roads maybe.
Some roads you might get two miles.
Yeah.
A guy tried to do it, uh, two years ago, it was a hundred and sixty-eight dollars a mile.
All right, so that's thirty bucks more a mile that we have in this current budget that we're looking at.
What I, what I did was I times their hourly rate, times forty, and I estimated five weeks, or do what we can do in five weeks. And that's how I came up with the numbers that I did.
The last contract, they estimated sixty hours, and they only worked twenty-two until their second machine broke down.
Yeah, I don't, I, and this is just a, an observation, I don't know how you can contract like that and have any control at all. So I would sooner experiment with the idea, or consider the idea, of doing it as a lock, of saying, okay, we wanna get a hundred miles moved, or we wanna get fifty miles moved, this amount of payment of miles to do it. Go look around, come back to me. If you can do it for that, great, if you can't, tell me why, and what can you do it for?
I, I've talked to a few other towns, and that's how they do it, is by the hour as well, nobody else.
And how do you have any control that you're sitting, I mean, the guy could be sitting on his tractor, you know, smoking a cigarette, it could take forever to do a mile of road. I mean, he's just working by the hour, he's looking to get as many hours as he can get. What we wanna have is we want him to get as many miles as he can get. And if you can do the whole thing in half as much time...
Sure.
We'll still pay him the same amount of money.
Exactly.
So you want a set price for the town?
Yeah, or, or just on a permanent basis, whatever, yeah.
Okay, I beat that to death. What about guardrails?
I'm gonna start on guardrails. How does Austin have wooden guardrails and other things to try to be created?
It, I really don't know the last time that the guardrails have been cleaned out. I, I mean, brushed out.
Oh, you did the one up at Dager, yesterday?
Yeah, so yesterday.
You drive up Dager, or Ledge Hill, or they were doing one yesterday?
Yeah, we, we do when we, when we can, we just, we haven't had a lot of extra money the last few years with the snowplow.
So that's why I'd like to know how many guardrails, bridges in town, and what, what cost to hire someone to brush them out? That's all I'm asking. If we need to put it out to bid, I'll help you, and we'll write the bid. I asked the same thing about what would it cost...
Wouldn't that be with the mowing thing?
That's why we put it under the mowing. Mowing roadside, mowing guardrails, or mid-sense, or, or whatever, it's two separate things, isn't it?
We're not gonna, I mean, I'm not in favor of breaking the budget out to my new line, line, line by line. I think this is a workable format. Maybe more, more description on the follow-up page.
More, more, yeah, more detail on the, on the break, on the backup.
No, we added seventy-five hundred dollars, I'll just break one, for crack sealing. We don't spend any money on that. But that's seventy-five hundred dollars that we didn't have a line item for, that was added to the budget this year. So that money's gone somewhere, I'm sure it went into winter maintenance or whatever.
No, we are gonna crack seal still, that is...
We're still gonna do some crack sealing?
We don't have a choice, you still have to do bridges. I mean, it's just imminent, we're gonna have a problem if we don't. There's certain areas, you might not have to do every road, but there's certain, we gotta do the bridges, that's just something we don't ever skip.
I'm, I'm gonna go back to the next three items. The brush at the beach area, the brush at Sergeant Crossing, Lake Street, including up the bank. Do you have those individual estimates?
I did, I, I thought I gave them to you before, and I know I did, because I had it.
Okay, on those, of those things there, I'm just looking for a ballpark number. I have no problem with the town putting those out to bid, or your company bidding on them, or including them in your budget, or whatever, but these projects need to be done, right?
It's, it's, it's standard, we've done it before, it's all part of the mowing.
Yeah, and we need to, to budget, I think, under mowing, so if you can get those numbers, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I've given you the hours before, and I still have them on my desk, so...
Uh, next is culverts. You've read the culvert study?
Yes.
And we have, what, forty culverts in failure?
We have two of them already replaced, so far.
And, and so we're gonna do two a year? I'm being a wise guy here.
We're doing what we can at this point, with the budget we have.
Well, I think, and I'll chime in on the culvert thing. It's been at twenty, well, it's ranged anywhere from thirty-three to forty-seven, thirty-three. So it's been in the three, two to three thousand dollar range. It's actually gone down from where it has been historically.
And that was before the study?
And that's before the study, and I'm thinking, what, what's going on here? So I, I think we need to take a look at what, take a look at the culvert study, and then schedule out. I mean, how many are in failure?
Three dozen?
Yeah, I mean, if we do twelve, what's that gonna cost us? And I think we need to know, we need to push that line more than we need to push some other lines, is what I'm saying.
That, I, I feel...
Because we've got the information on...
I feel the same way, and I come up with a price list on a culvert, and all you gotta do is fill it in. No, how much does the pipe cost? How much do the two hitters cost? How much, how much fill does it take?
So, when you're looking at that number for the culverts?
The twenty-five hundred?
That is just a, while the culverts have dropped off at the town shore, that's not actually in stowing. It's just a have inventory.
Okay, when I, was, uh, where's the...
We, we do them, like, if we replace one in the spring, for replacement...
Is that highway maintenance?
I don't have a separate line for replacing culverts, it's kinda like, could be like this, the past one we did was on fall maintenance. Yeah, if we see a pale...
I, I support my brother Chip, is that it's very simple to come down what it costs to replace a culvert, times ten culverts.
Okay.
And that, and it's listed right here, how much is it gonna cost?
And make it, if it's gonna be in fall maintenance, let's say, just put it, make it part of the detail of fall maintenance. Because obviously, if we're gonna ask it to do eight or ten culverts, it's gonna push that number up. And so there has to be some justification for that.
Let me toss something out. Like you did with Land Pond Road, it was a big project, and you came to me, hey, if you wanna put it out to, to bid, go ahead. I have no problem doing something different. The town, every year, is gonna do ten culverts, you identify the ones, and we put it out to bid?
Or make a warrant article out of it?
Sure.
Take it out of his budget, make a warrant article out of it.
It isn't, it is, it isn't a slam about your ability to put a pipe in, or anything like that. We're getting farther and farther behind. You can't be successful when we don't make the money available.
Well, the other aspect of that is, if, we're already looking at a ten percent increase in his budget. There's a certain mentality out on the street that has this problem with budget creep. You start, if we added another twenty thousand dollars, and that, I think, is really sharp money to put a culvert in. Now we're, you know, another five percent, or whatever.
How?
So, we might be better off getting a figure for a gen, and making a warrant article like the paving article. That way, we know we've got three... That way, we know we've got three dozen to do. We can stand up a town meeting and explain we're gonna do a third of them, and next year we're gonna do another third, so expect to see another warrant article. But it's because we did this culvert study, and it's all proactive.
I've had a conversation with him, and I said, the selectmen have been agreeable to a reasonable increase in investment in our roads. I know the budget committee asked him, and he was there. I know CIP has asked him. And there was even one person who stood up and said, let's add three hundred, three hundred thousand to the budget at town meetings. So the people out there are within reason. We're meant to do it your way, and I support that. Tree work. As I understand it, there's two types of tree work. One is the stuff that falls down, and it's an emergency in nature, correct? The other is, you start taking a road, like you started, and you go back nicely, go back to the stone walls and take the dead stuff out. And there's about a hundred of those trees that are ready to come down, right?
Yes, every year.
And it's about, what, a thousand dollars a tree?
Every tree's different, so you can't put a price on it.
But it's gotta be done safely and around wires and all that. If we get our roads open, guess what? There's more sun to work with the sand and salt. And you've been a big proponent of this over the years, but it's money, so. Okay, go on.
He hasn't changed his number on tree work.
Apron paving, do you have the cost of the two aprons?
Frank's supposed to, I'm supposed to meet Frank hopefully later on today. But Frank Carroll is supposed to give us the cost for some of the roads as well.
Road striping? What company do you deal with?
Just for traffic lines.
Okay, was that the one that was supposed to come, or? I know in, they put us off five times, and Oscar was considering going with someone else.
I am too.
Okay. When you put it up, do you go out to bid on this? Do you, do they tell you how much per mile, or how much per foot, or?
Per foot.
Okay. And can you make those, that information available to us?
Yep, yeah, we have all that.
Okay. This is an editorial comment. I think having our roads striped in October after our summer people and camp people have gone, it's not any use, sir. I happen to know this company put two towns off, and I'm offended by it. We need the roads striped when there's busy traffic.
Yep, I agree. We try it.
And I'm in your corner on this?
So we have, we have some idea what we're gonna pay next year, hopefully.
Yes. Well, I think we're gonna wait till, I'm not gonna announce that until we have that paving study, but I still have my ten-year plan that I had.
So you didn't alter that until the paving study?
Correct.
With respect to paving, we talked a while back about getting a price to do that piece on Sawyer Road. And Frank's gonna give you that price as well, right?
Didn't somebody move to Shirley Way?
We'll look at the paving study.
On Sawyer Road, as I understand it, there's four parts to it. What it will cost to level it out, or road grade it, or whatever, is part of the price, correct?
Yeah, they come in.
Then there's the base coat, correct?
Yes.
And do you wanna do the second coat, like we did on Durgan Road, the same year?
Yes.
So I think...
No, it doesn't have to be the same year. We can do it the next year for once.
I have no problem getting it done. Okay, I think it's eleven and seven, I don't know. And they also do, the shoulders is the fourth part of the price, correct?
Yes.
And I have no problem. If we have to make a warrant article, fine. If not, it goes someplace.
How long do you want the town meeting to last?
Yep, I don't, you know, I don't know if it legally has to go there or not. I'm open to whatever.
Well, we're not working on the warrant yet, so this is all just preliminary discussion on that. But we do need to pull together all the numbers accurately, but...
I have, I have a couple of other questions. What is the maintenance to the air-vac system gonna cost you this year and next year?
We have, we already have the filter to swap out for this year, so we're good.
It's two sets of filters, correct?
We had an extra set when we got it.
I had a citizen ask me if you really need another fan there to blow the bad stuff out when you're welding and dusting and painting and all that. You know, another type of fan there.
Yeah, it would hurt, that's for sure.
Okay. At the fire station, the truck starts, and it leaves. There, you guys, it's a working environment, and it's not quite the same. And I don't know what your plans are for that. I understand he painted?
Yes, yep. He did well. Did a good job for us. I thought it came out pretty nice. He picked solid oak and wood. And he came in at a lower price than what he's quoted us. Worked out well.
To get back to the fans, have you contacted the fire chief and communicated with him about filtration system?
Yes, actually, I had my shop guy talk to Adam about that as well.
Okay. The other thing is, Adam is still working on replacing the cement work and driveway in front of his station. What are you doing? What are your plans?
It turned into such a big snowball that I didn't wanna spend a hundred thousand on it, so I kinda just not doing it for the moment.
Does it make sense to kinda combine the two projects in the next year?
That's up to you guys. It's out of my hands at this point.
But it's your building.
Yeah, but I kinda had a proposal. You guys kinda, you took it to another whole thing about excavating it down deep and this, and it's gonna be huge money. I just, I don't feel like we need to spend that much money on it.
How do you know what's there? I've seen, I've seen two town buildings done here, and it's rocks.
What you guys wanna do.
Am I wrong?
What you guys wanna do. I was trying to keep it simple, that it was affordable, you know, but, I kinda gave you a price on it and everything. It turned into a big study, so.
Oh, so your nose is out of joint?
I don't wanna be part of that. I don't feel it's necessary.
I'm spot.
We've given him quite a lot to do.
Yep.
Yes.
Are you thinking on next date, so would you?
Yeah, I was thinking of the budget committee.
Oh, the twenty-third. I was thinking to have Jim hopefully, but, I forget what the November one was. Fifteen, maybe? Seventy? Fifteen, I think.
Have you tentatively planned the...
Actually, I have a calendar here on the line.
Is there tentatively a date for when Lake Region Planning comes in and makes a presentation?
For the paving?
Yes.
Ah, the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Is that something we should hold at the fire station in case members of the public wanna be there and listen?
We got Jim here. I guess paving is interesting. Jim's here.
Yep.
I don't know how interested the general public is in the size of paving.
Just thinking of the big picture.
So Tuesday, October twenty-third is Budget Committee, and then Thursday, November fifteenth.
And we've got a meeting on the ninth, right?
So I've been...
No, no, no. Budget, budget people.
Oh, yes, excuse me, coming up, yes.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
How much time do you need there, James? Twenty, what was the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
October, maybe, one that he could squeeze in too.
Or do you wanna go to the first part of November?
So, we gotta put in the paper for our snow plowing bid. We also gotta put in for the, getting the town load as a set price. And I have to have...
I don't know if you'll get all the bids done by then. I'm just thinking that we'll get some more information by,
Yep.
the first of November, I would think.
Are you aware of another way of doing it? I mean, if you wanna go buy the mower and work a deal with the town, but that's big bucks, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
I know that was something you looked at for this year.
Yeah, yeah, and I thought about it. I found a used mower for twenty thousand. I thought that was...
Is it a rented, is there ability to rent that kind of equipment?
Oh, yeah.
That's what you've done with the pants, yeah.
And, you know, we've had trouble, but I also talked to another town, and they said they had the same problem. They're gonna put theirs out to bid this year too. If they can't get anybody, they're gonna buy, they're gonna put it out. They're gonna actually buy a mower.
A number of, a number of towns have had the same problem, because the company that, that had the damaged equipment, two mowers, no, those mowers were supposed to work in another town, and they didn't, so.
Are you thinking the first of November would be better? Probably it would be better. So can we set Jim up for the first part of November?
Let's take a peek here. Let's see. So Budget Committee meets on the fifteenth. If then you guys meet, they're gonna like...
In November?
Yeah.
We meet on Election Day. That's our first...
Oh, right, right, right.
I have a whole different question.
We're all there, all good.
You meet on the...
The paving is down on Brown Road?
Yes. Oh.
The sixth, you guys.
I was gonna give you a little bit of an update today. Brown Road project has been paved. The quote for F.R. Carroll to do the gravel edges was eleven-five. Eleven thousand five hundred to do the edges.
And what do we have in the budget for that?
We put in ten. We put in ten, didn't we?
Well, yes, I think you're right. We did put in ten here. But no matter how we look at it, I think we had to take the money out of a different fund.
The special...
Yes.
Howie Fund.
Did we put thirty-six thousand dollars in there, so it met the balance that was left in the warrant article? I'll have to go back in my minutes.
Yeah, it sounds familiar, but I'm not sure.
We agreed to amount of money out of that based upon the estimates. And I don't have those figures in front of me, and it's gonna be, whatever, we're gonna use up everything in the paving warrant article, and then we're gonna supplement it out of the special paving fund.
Yes.
So the question is, at this point, eleven hundred dollars more than what we thought it was gonna be to have the gravel down on the edges, right?
No, we put in ten in that estimate for gravel.
Eleven hundred, yeah, but, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred dollars more than what we
Yep.
estimated. So, and when they put the gravel down, it's the right shoulder width, and they compact it as they, as they go?
Yep.
That right?
Two foot. Yep, it's two feet compacted. Yeah, I'm, I'm...
So I think, I think we...
I don't think we have a choice.
Yeah, well, alright.
We have to.
Yeah, yeah, I think we...
We had to venture the extra funds too.
Yes, exactly.
Neither of us feel like we had a choice, but...
Yep.
No, it has to be done. It's just gonna be a problem.
Exactly.
Okay, so we're here Election Day, which is November sixth.
Right.
All day. So we'll expect some report from you on this.
And you're gonna be going to budget after that, so we gotta, we have to wrap your budget up that day, so that we have our...
So then we'll go to the budget, budget meeting on the fifteenth.
Available to go.
And when do we do the warrant article on paving?
Uh, has, December.
Yeah, 'cause we're gonna have to redo that study.
Right, right. Well, and what I expect we're gonna see in the study is, it'll give us a better sense for, here's what we've been spending on an annual basis. If we wanna make some progress toward getting, we're gonna have to go up by X percent consistently. And it's great for people to stand up at town meetings and say, we gotta spend twice as much. But whatever we do, we ought to do on a sustainable basis going forward. So if it's adding fifty thousand a year, whatever it is, it's, it's with a plan, not just with a, we'll throw a bunch of money at it and, and see where it goes from there.
You said that your, excuse me, putting out to bid was striping, mowing, and plowing. Correct?
Yes.
Did I miss anything?
And we'll talk again about culvert installations, whether or not we wanna separate that into a warrant article. Because right now, if all we're gonna do is two culverts a year, we're not gonna catch up to the problem. So we need to do about what?
So that's why I put in more money for next year.
You didn't though. You only put twenty-five hundred bucks in.
That's, again.
That's purchasing culverts.
Purchasing culverts.
But if you're placing more culverts than you ever did, then you should be buying more culverts than you ever did. So that, in my mind, I'm thinking, no, you're buying the same number of culverts, so it's like, we're not gonna have...
Well, the figure, it's four hundred dollars for a per crossing bridge road, so like, four hundred dollars apiece, we're getting...
But, and then the second step in that is that you need to see, let's just plug it into the fall maintenance number. What are those ten culverts gonna cost? How does that change that fall maintenance number? And you fill out the discussion about how we're gonna do it with the culvert.
Okay, yep. And you said you had a formula to...
Yeah, I'll type it up for you.
That'll be great, thank you.
When we were last here, were there a couple of citizens that wanted a call from you? One on Durgan Road, one on...
We had, we had some ditch issues, and I think we already corresponded back from Max, that is, that ditch has been cleaned out by his driveway up there. So you guys, I guess, somebody, where was it, Federal Corner Road was saying their ditch is, uh, done. This year.
Okay, we were at Tickle Corners Road yesterday, so I don't know if it's in front of that person's house or not, but we were there.
So maybe that's, that's done.
Yeah, well, as the rain events get bigger, people get more curious about their ditches.
And was that granite post a problem on Durgan Road for your snow plow?
It is, yes.
And doesn't it have to be four feet back from the pavement?
What I need to do is actually get the specifics from the post office before I approach them. I'm just gonna hand them over. Specifically says...
That's a topic of conversation.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll make sure I hand my key to us.
Thank you for investigating.
Can we need some? Uh, there is, we got one.
Uh, just, Jim, we know what the good news is. You haven't coughed in an hour. Alright, thank you.
So we have here delegation deposit authority submitted by the town treasurer to provide the tax collector with authority to make their own deposit of funds.
And do we check with the area on that?
Hi, this is new to me, what you're speaking about, your answer. What you're speaking of is completely new to me, so I don't seem to know that you have that.
Yep. You didn't see this?
No.
Well, she just brought it in. That's
Okay.
She being the tax collector. So, and she indicated that periodically they redo these. So, I guess, by law, the tax collector is supposed to make all deposits, and this is delegating authority for the tax collector to make.
The treasurer's supposed to make deposits.
I'm, did I say tax collector? Treasurer's supposed to make all deposits, and he is asking that we delegate authority to the tax collector to make deposits that are taken in by her office.
And does that, that goes into the general checkbook?
So I'll entertain a motion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Close?
All right.
Excuse me, I have a couple things please in that, sorry, Jim, in that.
Oh, in that.
In this folder?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So this is a letter of thanks to Carl.
Oh, excuse me, just, that can be, that can be actually, excuse me, that manila folder there that says for Fridays, we're excessive.
Oh, okay. All right. Oh, this, that's for Jim, yeah?
Oh.
Yep.
See, I, okay.
And diesel grant, that's no longer an issue.
Okay.
Let's supervise that. Library trustees would like to be able to participate in the catastrophic leak bank with the town.
I have no problem if it can be done legally, but technically they're quasi-town employees.
Yep, yep, all right, do we need a motion on that?
So moved.
Second. Did you second?
No, you did.
I did? Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, I think you did, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's fine. And then the police budget thing, we'll have to pick up.
I'm doing math.
Yeah, have to figure out where we came up wrong on that.
Yeah.
Before we revisit it.
Okay, you wanna weigh on that?
Yeah, I don't think, and, and for next week, 'cause we're not meeting on Monday, right?
Right.
But the budget, budget committee is meeting on the ninth. That, I'm gonna bring in all the panoply of little budgets that we have, but police, I think I'll wait till the twenty-third, I'm owed age of moving to fifteenth of November.
Okay, just, the agenda's been written for fire, emergency management, general buildings, and then transfer station and general buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause, like, for instance, the chief's gone, and certain people couldn't make, so we have those budgets for the night.
All right, do we wanna act on these intents to cut while we're here?
Sure, I'd like to go for it.
Get him off the-
If you have something else to ask me, but I don't remember what it was.
This is tax map thirty-two dash twenty-two and intent to cut wood or timber.
How move we sign it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Close?
And there's ten. And let's see. We will next meeting. Okay.
I'm gonna move we adjourn?
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Did you cover the checks?
Yes, you did.
Uh-